Can I have a check to your side?
Good evening, and call the night's meeting to order. Let's have the roll call.
Kessler?
Here.
Walters?
Here.
Gordon?
Here.
Ebert?
Here.
Binner?
Here.
Horton?
Here.
Here.
Nice invocation we've given by Pastor Kirkinson of the Hayesville Christian Church.
Well, I begin my invocation with a story tonight.
What?
It happened a half hour ago. I was at Taco Bell. That's not an unusual story, I'm there often. But on this occasion, four boys came in, young boys, sit down over in the corner booth. And I just got my usual two tacos and a burrito. Eaten my first taco and one of the boys approaches me and says, "Can I have your taco?" I just looked at him for a while. He walked away and I just kept looking at him. "You serious?" "Yes, sir." "You hungry?" "Yes, sir." "You didn't say please." He smiled and he said, "Please." So, I gave him my taco. And that's not the cool part of the story. The cool part of the story, half hour before it came here, is that he took the taco and went around back around the corner to the corner booth. He didn't eat it. He gave it to one of his friends that was with him. So Heavenly Father, we come tonight, and we are thankful for the ways that you remind us of what's most important in life. That the greatest joy is truly found in giving. Especially this time of year, we celebrate giving. I lift up this council to you tonight, I thank you for their service, that they serve on behalf of others. Father, that you would continue to give them wisdom as they distribute your blessings in this community. I lift each one up here to you tonight, and I pray everyone here, no matter what's going on in their lives, we just find that same simple joy. Not asking for themselves, but asking for another, and giving. And finding the joy and the hope and the life that we have in Jesus Christ, in whose name I pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to start tonight's meeting with a special order of business. We have several of our employees that you'll see have been with us for quite a while. And we start with service awards right now for these employees. I'm going to read their name, we're going to start with the ones that are the shortest as far as longevity, and the shortest actually is only his 10 years as far as longevity goes, so you'll see where they go from there. We've got the award and then the department head will be giving that to them once I read the information about them. First one they have is Jonathan Simmons, he's been with us for 10 years. You get to come forward, as we say all these good things about you. Jonathan's been with the city for 10 years, he started as a full-time temporary worker. He's worked his way through the trenches of a skilled laborer to the heavy equipment operator to his current position as street superintendent. So you know when those streets are cleaned out there that who's responsible at this point then. He has three children, Kyle 13, is it Kylie?
Kylie.
Kylie 13, Brooke 9, and Hunter 8. Enjoy spending time with his kids and their activities. He feels fortunate to be an employee of the City of Hayesville, we're fortunate to have him, which he calls home, and the city feels fortunate to have a dedicated employee on his team. Next employee is Levi Brewer, also a 10-year employee. 10 years ago, Levi began working in the City of Hayesville as a full-time general maintenance worker with the park department. He then moved into meter reading and the water department, and he worked hard to pass his water operator certification, moving up to the class four, which is the highest certification you can reach. Levi is now the water superintendent due to his hard work and dedication, so if there's something, again, with your water problem, call him. Levi enjoys hunting, shooting guns, as well as spending time with his wife Melissa, his daughter Alexa 8, and his son Carson who's four. Also at 10 years, we have Grady German. Grady is currently assigned as the school resource officer with the Hayesville Police Department. He was hired on May 12th, 2008, as a patrolman. He worked in the police department as first shift patrol officer, third shift patrol officer, and school resource officer. During his time with Hayesville Police Department, he's been specially trained as a dare officer and school resource officer, and he is at which school?
Both middle schools.
And he's been married for 23 years to his wife Randy, and they have three children and six grandchildren. All those 10 years, we have Robert Bobby Tucker, and, oh, he's not here tonight. We're going to read this anyway, so you know. Bobby's an employee of the city in 2008 as a wastewater trainee, worked his way through classifications as a wastewater operator, class three. The position in the wastewater department diversified maintaining safety supplies, locating utilities, driving Challenger and applying sludge on local farm ground. Bobby's married to Jan and has four children. Bobby enjoys riding motorcycles with his wife Jan, spending time with his family, and he's a very dedicated employee. Next is Terry Sanders, who's 10 years, I don't think Terry's here either. She began with the employment of the City of Hayesville on March 24th, 2008, positioned as bookkeeping assistant to the first department. While this position, Terry was once were the daily balancing assistant of payroll and serving as backup to account pay on others. One major comment, Terry had while a position was revamped the city's record retention schedule, and Terry continues seeing record retention and record destruction. Terry was promoted to the assistant city clerk on March 4th, 2012, and her duties include payroll, tax preparation, and payments. When the healthcare reform was passed, she took on the extra bookkeeping and reporting for that. Her attention to detail, work ethic, because I'm married, Terry is actually an asset to the City of Hayesville. Terry is mayor today, and they have a son, Bryce, and three grandchildren. Carla Loplin, 10 years. Carla is currently assigned as a community resource specialist in the police department. She began working in the police department on March 17th, 2008, as a dispatcher. Her dispatching was transferred to Central County 911, she was reassigned to the CRS position, during her days working in police records, answering the phone, radios, helping see if citizens that come into the station need assistance. She's married to Bob, and they have three children and 12 grandchildren with number Who's going to present this next one? I'm going to do it, you're going to present it to yourself?
Yeah.
Next one's Little Black, Will, didn't know he'd been with us this long, 10 years. He was hired as comptroller of the city on March 10th, 2008, in the city clerk department. On April 1st, 2012, he was promoted to deputy administrative officer at the administration services department. He was promoted to chief administrative officer December 13th, 2012, where he works with the mayor achieving the goals of the city as budget allows. Will's married to Constance, they have a daughter Grace, three sons, Brent, Luke, and Next one is Tony Martin, Tony's also been 10 years. He began working in the city as a wastewater trainee. Year later, he transferred to full-time meter reader with the water department. Forty years later, he's completed all requirements of classification, promoted to water department supervisor, and later promoted to assistant public work director. With the knowledge he acquired in this position, Tony's appointed to public work director in February of 2017. Very fortunate to have Tony's knowledge and dedication to the City of Hayesville. He's married to Ashley and they have one daughter, Kaylee. He loves to watch her participate in year-round volleyball and loves to watch KU. Our last one's actually been with us double the time all the rest of them. Chad Bettles, 20 years, is what Chad's been with us now. He began his tenure with the City of Hayesville on summer of 1998, just in time to withstand the 99 tornado the following year. Chad is the City's Hayesville building inspector through the years, Chad has kept up with the changing building code requirements and inspections where current codes must be met, both residential and commercial. Chad inspects things from new residential defenses as well as commercial projects, running new schools, businesses, remodel existing. We're lucky to have such a conscientious, safety-minded, dedicated employee in Chad. He's married to Cindy and has two girls, Taylor and Shelby. Chad also enjoys gardening when time allows. Thank you, Chad.
Started and staying the same.
Those are the dedicated employees, and just on those anniversaries, we actually have people that have been with us longer, and then some in between, so we've got a very good longevity of our employees here in the city. With that, then, we're going to move on to presentation of approval minutes, eight minutes of November 26th, 2018. Mr. Kessler?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of number November 26th, 2018, with the following corrections. Under bills to be paid, there wasn't any first or second listed in the minutes. I believe a constable person, Horton, made the motion, and councilman, Gordon, second.
Motion second to approve the minutes as corrected. Discussion, question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Ebert?
Upstaying.
Binner?
Yes.
Horton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Item one, citizens be heard, we have nothing on the agenda. Item two, approval license and bond, there's nothing. Item three, introduction of ordinance and resolutions. A, a resolution authorizing and offering for sale of general obligation bonds, series 29A of the City of Hayesville, Kansas, and this is on the Country Lakes edition. Up to you, you got it, Brett.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council, Brett Shogren, George K. Baum and Company, financial advisor of the city. This is regarding the Country Lakes development, as the mayor said. Property owners have had the opportunity to prepay any or all of the assessments, had until November, or December 5th to do that, none of which were prepaid. So we will go ahead and move forward with selling the $840,000 in general obligation bonds, scheduled to sell on January 14th at 11:00 a.m. We'll work with your staff and develop a preliminary official statement, and we'll submit it, along with audits of the city, to about a list of 300 potential underwriters to potentially bid on it. On Monday, January 14th, we'll open the bids, we'll check them for accuracy, and award the best bid, which is the bid, the bidder with the lowest true cost, and award the bid to that underwriter. I'll then come back to your meeting on January 14th, I'll present the results of the sale, and for consideration will be the bond ordinance and the bond resolution. I'd be happy to answer any questions about that process.
Questions, council? If not, who would make, who can make the motion to approve the resolution? Ms. Binner?
I make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the offering for sale of general obligation bonds, series 2019-a of the City of Hayesville, Kansas, second.
Motion second to approve the resolution for resolution for the authorization of the bonds as presented. Discussion, question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Ebert?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Horton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
We'll then move to item B, which is consideration of the temporary notes on the Timber Creek Estates, and A is acceptance of bid, and then B is the resolution, resolution on, direct direction to the issuance. So, we've got, I think, the bid sheet, so you can see what those bid sheets are, so we can accept the bid as presented?
Yes, at a previous meeting, you authorized a resolution authorizing the sale of general obligation temporary notes today on December 10th. With help from your staff, we developed that preliminary official statement and submitted to underwriters, and this morning at 11:00 a.m., we opened a website called Parity, it's where the, these underwriters bid on these types of bonds and notes. And the sheet I passed around is what we call the bid tab. It gives a little summary of who bid and what they bid. Worst bid was from Oppenheimer and Company, at a true interest cost of 3.162696 percent. And the best bid was from Commerce Bank, at a true interest cost of 2.464784 percent. We recommend that you accept and award Commerce Bank's bid of 2.464784 percent, and proceed to adopt the note resolution. If accepted, we'll order the notes printed, we'll submit the transcript to the Attorney General's office for approval, and the note issue will close on January the 8th. If you have any answer to any questions about that?
Josh, we can do these together, can't we? Accept the bid and resolution?
Yeah.
They're all, they're all the same thing. Questions, council? If not, we need a motion to accept the bid and the resolution authorizing direct issuance and sale of delivery of general obligation temporary notes as presented with Commerce Bank, with the true interest cost of 2.464784 percent.
Second.
Motion second to accept the bid and resolution as presented. Discussion, question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Ebert?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Horton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Move to item C, this is an ordinance adopting codification of the City of Hayesville, Kansas, when I audition, providing for the effective date thereon. So this is your codification ordinance that was delivered to you last time for you to discuss. So, I don't know if there's any questions you want to come back with at this point, so that, Will, can I answer those for you?
I appreciate the change on the light ordinance.
Seeing no questions or change here, do we do need a motion to approve the ordinance adopting codification? Ms. Binner?
Make a motion, we approve the ordinance codification?
Second.
Motion second to approve the ordinance, the adoption and codification of ordinances as presented. Discussion, question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Ebert?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Horton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Item D, then, the resolution providing that the community of Hayesville urges its citizens to join this effort and hereby declares the city to be an official entrant in the Pride program for the year 2019. This is something we have to do to make sure the Pride program is truly accepted through the state of Kansas, so we do need a resolution to approve them as a Hayesville organization. Anyone would like to make that motion? Mr. Kessler?
Make motion, we approve the resolution providing that the community of Hayesville urges its citizens to join this effort and hereby declares the city to be an official entrant in the Pride program for the year 2019.
Second.
Motion second to approve the resolution for the Pride organization. Discussion, question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Ebert?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Horton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Move on then to item four, which is notice on communications, A, government announcements, any announcements that council may have. Seeing none, I've got the senior center announcements. Tuesday, December 11th, the advisory board meets at 1:00 tomorrow, if you'd like to come. Wednesday, December 12th, is HWMS band concert, at the Hayesville West Middle School. Friday, December 14th, is the senior birthday dinner at 5:30. Sunday, December 16th, is the Christmas show at Roxy's. Wednesday, December 19th, is the Secret Santa Bingo at 12:30. And Thursday, December 20th, is movie night, Christmas inheritance at 12:30, and they are closed for the 24th and the 25th on Christmas. Seeing no other announcements, we'll move on then to item B, amendment to council regarding new businesses that have license in town, which looks like we have one, which is the water source technology at this point. And then move on into item five, old business, we have nothing. Item six, other business, presentation of planning walkable places study. We've got SWT Design with us tonight. Kale Dornbos?
Dornbos.
Dornbos. And Chris Sanders with SWT Design. They, it was sent out to you electronically, so they're going to present that.
We were told to get the IT.
To us tonight. He's going to bring the visuals out.
Oh, it's up, perfect. Once again, thanks for having us here. My name's Kale Dornbos, I'm with SWT Design. We're a landscape architect and urban design planning office, we're office out of Kansas City, we do work in the greater Kansas area and communities just such as Hayesville. We were selected by the City of Hayesville, I believe, back in, dating, I think, March, April of this year, through a competitive process to develop a bicycle and pedestrian implementation plan for the City of Hayesville, that built off of the master plan work that had been done in the past by the city. It was funded by a match of local Hayesville dollars, City of Hayesville dollars, with WAMPO funds that were secured through KDOC, so collaborative effort to develop this plan. I'm going to take about 5, 10 minutes to kind of present to you the highlights of the plan, I believe you all received a link to a PDF in your meeting packet, so you may have had a chance to download it and take a look at it. I'll go through the overview, and then if you have any questions, I can answer those at that time. Like I said, this is kind of an overview, and you'll have to apologize, I'm trying to figure out what TV to look at here, so, but, the one right there, yes. So, it really was, it was, it's to build on the initial step you guys took, I believe, in house of developing a master plan, a bicycle master plan for the, and walkable connection, master plan for the community, so we took that and dug a little bit deeper into the planning process and then making recommendations for implementation, and then building a GIS database, which is a computerized database of all your sidewalk and bicycle infrastructure in town, so as you begin to make improvements to that infrastructure, you have a way to update the model and know where you're at with the, kind of the rating of your different sidewalks and bicycle infrastructure in town, and kind of, it's just a way of organizing it and making best moves forward as you implement using dollars you have available, so. The process was a very thorough community engagement, activities at the beginning of the process, we reached out to several folks in the community, different organizations that have an interest in, or are a group that was involved in pedestrian activity, whether it's school groups, the list on the screen, it touches all the high ones, we went to the library, we participated in a senior lunch, school in-service, we had about 1,000 school employees, administrators, teachers at the in-service, that we had a large dot polling exercise where we asked for their feedback regarding kind of their specific interest in biking and walking in the community. Went to a party in the 060, which was, I believe was a pretty inclement weathered day for that, if I remember right. And then the mayor's bike ride, Rose participated in that for some dot polling, so you may have seen some folks out in the community doing some of this, this community engagement. As we go through these processes, we find it's really important to, you know, I think everybody in the room has an idea of where the gaps are in the pedestrian infrastructure, where the bicycle master plan direction might want to go, but we feel it's really valuable to reach out to those folks that are using it every day and make sure that we hear them and understand their needs, so that was really helpful to get that, that community input and feedback as we developed the plan. Out of that engagement, and this may not be new to most of you, but the three big things that came up, that came out, it kind of sifted to the top of the engagement, and the questionnaires were more sidewalks, more lighting, and more crosswalks, which really focuses around safety and filling in those connectivity gaps, where you have sidewalk infrastructure today, but there may be a gap between where you want to go and where you're starting. So those were the big things that came out. A lot of other things came out, you know, connectivity, safety, enforcing current laws that are on the books, connecting the new green zones, or greenways, school zones, but the big things really were sidewalk sliding, crosswalks, which I do think are kind of the core of any connectivity plan in any community, so. The next three slides, I'll move through these pretty quickly so we can get some of the higher recommendations that came out of the plan. This is some of the polling we did with the community and staff in here, a lot of the staff at the table participated as well, so. Where do you, this is real simple, where do you live? So the blue dots are the folks that we, we had a touch point during the engagement process. Where do you walk or bike? The, all the, and this is, it's a little hard to read on the TV screen, but all the yellow masses, where are they, where are those folks that responded to the surveys, where they go? And then, where are the conflicts right now? What makes it more difficult to get to where you want to go, whether it's lack of bicycle or sidewalk infrastructure across one of the bridges, precludes you from going north to south, or it may be that there's not a crosswalk in the location that gets you to the place you want to go in an easier or safe manner, so that's what these red dots kind of begin to identify. Community inventory, Chris spent a lot of time out in the community investigating, just boots on the ground, where do you have, you know, what's out there today, what's the condition of what you have out there, where do you not have infrastructure? So a lot of these, you know, the orange is things like city hall, city-owned assets. The blue is the school inventory, a lot of the, a lot of the walkable, you know, a lot of the walkable connections in town right now revolve around how do we get kids safe at a school in a manner that keeps them in a safe way, keeps them off the asphalt, off the, off the streets and up on sidewalks. The green is your community green space inventory, whether it's parks, or the rec centers, or things of that nature, where people, where are people going in the, in the, in the community from a public inventory, if you will? Just getting into it real quick, I want to get through this so we can get to the recommendations. We look at recreation destinations, these are just, the blue and the green are, what is a, what is a mile walk, what is a mile and a half walk from some of those key community assets? So this slide deals with recreation destinations, it's a little small on the screen, but you know, it's the parks, the sports complex, the pool, but it's all those open space destinations that the patrons of the community want to be at and want to get at and walk and bike to. This is the civic destinations, which are obviously clustered around the, around the central core of the community, but once again, this is what it takes, it's a quarter mile and a half mile walk, which is, correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, it's about a half mile across and a one mile wide is kind of what the dimensions of that green space is. And then the schools, this is the education assets. So we took all that, we built a database, a GIS database, which is, like I said, it's a computer model that maps all of the existing infrastructure you have, and then helps to kind of sift out or identify where those gaps are. And so this is, this is a map identifying all of the existing condition and highlighting some of those gaps. So if you look at the orange dots up there, there's some of the gaps that became readily apparent as we begin to look at what you have today. And with that, one more slide, I believe. So, from all that, we developed an overall plan, working with the mayor and others that were on the advisory committee, to develop those priority projects. So the goal of this plan is unlike a master plan, which might say, hey, you got some, here's the, here's the big idea, the goal was to identify those projects that are, that are most important to the community, and give you a way to implement those, or kind of a roadmap to implement those different projects. So we identified six projects that Chris is going to go over here in a moment, that sifted to the top as a priority for the community moving forward, and projects that you want for some of those funding sources that you may go out to, to help secure funds to match what you may have with the city to get these built. So Chris is going to go over six projects that filtered out to the top in the master plan.
Thanks, Kale. As Kale mentioned, we went through an extensive community engagement process, data analysis, analytics on what's going on in the community, and we developed these six priority projects. We then took that back, met with city staff, reviewed these, and finalized this list. So what we're going to walk through is six priority projects, a future phase vision, and then some kind of next steps, if you will. Priority project number one, Ward's Fourth Sidewalk Extension. This is probably one of the most identified and impactful projects that we landed on. You can, every site visit we had, we saw folks walking this route currently without a sidewalk. What we're proposing here is an extension of the six-foot sidewalk from the crossing over the floodway to the north. I apologize, it's Sixth and Third Street on the north end, and then back to the east over to Meridian, sorry, Broadway. So what that will allow is for pedestrian traffic to connect these, the northernmost neighborhood of Hazsville back to town core. We feel that this was a priority and impactful project based on everything that we found onsite and in the field. Priority project number two is the South Main Connection. This ties the Timber Creek neighborhood expansion to the south, back into town core. Again, there is a sidewalk that currently extends to here, it stops, we're proposing the extension of that to the southernmost neighborhood entrance in this location. Again, that allows pedestrians access back to those amenities that we talked about in the analysis phase. The third would be the Country Lakes Extension. Again, very similar to the last one. This is extending existing infrastructure. You can see here, and I apologize, I didn't explain the color coding here, but this bold line is existing multimodal circulation. So you've got a bike trail there now, which will facilitate or accommodate both pedestrians and bicyclists. So what we're proposing is to extend that to the south and then over to the west to capture both of those neighborhood entrances. That will service this neighborhood and any potential future expansions in that area. The East Grand Sidewalk Extension is the next. Again, this kind of reaches out to one of the perimeter developments in the community and brings, or allows for pedestrian access back into the core. So there's an existing sidewalk that extends on the south side over there across, I believe it's hydraulic, so what we would, this extension is on the south side of the road over to that neighborhood entrance, and then you would have some crossings there at hydraulic drive. And those crossings, it's elaborated on in the document, but the crossings are all ADA, fully accessible crossings there. The next one is the West Grand Sidewalk Extension. This one has relatively large impact from a education perspective. This ties from the existing developments on Seneca, sorry, sorry, Meridian, from Meridian over to Hazsville High School and the middle schools. This will allow students then access back into the existing infrastructure here and back to town core. And the final priority project is the Meridian Crossing of the Floodway. This is actually a project that's currently being funded and being pushed forward. So this is, this is a real-time vision, this is, this one's going to happen soon. Basically what this is, is a pedestrian bridge across the floodway, allowing what you'll see, there's existing infrastructure to the north coming from Campus High School, and there's existing infrastructure from the south, but right now there's a gap to get across the floodway. So this is a proposal to connect that and complete that, which would allow, you know, many of the students that attend the high school to circulate back down to the town core. Additional improvements, in the document you'll see some recommendations on code overlays, things referencing new developments requiring sidewalks, connecting to the adjacent communities to the north, the city of Wichita, to the east, the city of Derby, some larger regional scale bicycle and pedestrian connections to tie all of the regional communities together to boost the recreational benefit to, to all of those partners. Also included as an appendix in the document, it's not on the presentation slide, but we've got some future vision slides that talk about things like greenways, you've got an existing greenway system in your town. We've identified a few ways to expand on that, to tie some of the parks together in a more complete circuit. We've taken a look at in the future if the expansion of the bicycle and pedestrian multimodal system were to be expanded, some logical connections there to extend what you've got in place in the core, stretch that out to some of the peripheries as well. So with that, I will hand it back over to Kale for the next steps.
I think just to follow up on what Chris presented, there's, there are six priority projects that were identified as part of the plan. There are a whole myriad of other, not that they're not priority projects, but there are a lot more products than is those six in the plan. And then the second thing that, I'll go back a couple slides, if you haven't had a chance to get into the plan, each of these priority projects and even some of those secondary projects as you go, as you go down the list, we identified what the construction cost would be for those, what the design service fee would be for those if you were to hire an engineer to design those for implementation, and then what any kind of like secondary wayfinding signage, things like that, that might have to happen with that project. So the idea is that you now have these projects that have a very defined cost of, or what it's going to take to get them done, and that should, really, this plan is the first step in a lot of grant writing applications, if you're to go out and, and apply for particular grants that might be able to fund some of these different projects, the first thing they're going to ask is, do you have a plan? And so now you have a plan that allows you to go do that. So this is the first step of many to get, get some of these things rolling, but I think it's a critical step for a lot of the funding sources. So back to the last slide, so really, next steps, it's working with those different funding opportunities that are out there. There are a lot of different ways to fund some of these different recommended improvements, whether it's through WAMPO or the state or the feds, there's lots of different organizations out there. So working with those, you know, like I said, this project kind of winds down now, but we want to continue to be a resource to the city. Rose, I know, will continue to communicate on, you know, if you, if you have a grant opportunity that comes up, we're there to help you kind of decipher which one might be the best suited for that, so you can continue to go after that. It's, you know, implementation, going out and getting some of these things done. Some of these are small enough to where you can probably handle them within the city without having to go out there and find additional funds to do them. And then I can't reiterate enough, this GIS database, which I know Rose has talked about, getting GIS into the city, whether you, you know, getting that technology so where you guys can use this database moving forward, it's really, it's an interactive live database that allows you, five years down the road, you don't have to do this plan again because you've kind of hopefully updated it and maintained it on your own, and you've got a living database of where your gaps are. You know, if a sidewalk's rated as a five today, which means it's a gray sidewalk, five years from now, Tony may send his crews out there, and they may look at it and say, you know what, this thing didn't, didn't pass muster anymore, it's now a two or three, which puts it on that list that makes it recommended for improvement. So it's, it's making sure that you keep that up and utilize that in the way it was intended to be, and I think you'll be well on your way to fixing some of those connectivity issues in the community. So with that, Mayor, I'd like to open it up to questions.
Questions, Councilor? You must have done a great job. Kessler? Discuss.
I just had one question. Did you take into like consideration existing sidewalks, like, like on the Long Grand on the south side, the sidewalk butts right up against the street? Did you take into consideration of, you know, those type of sidewalks?
We did. We, and it was, of all the areas in town that we received feedback, like, hey, what do we do? That was one of the areas that we heard the most about, just the issue, you guys are all familiar with it, obviously, but where you've got kids walking to school up against the curb rush hour, there's lots of cars moving back and forth. It's, it's definitely something we studied, we considered. I think it, it has, it has challenges like any of these do with how do you fix it and how do you, you know, is there a way to, to improve it? And I, I think that's something that without, you know, we didn't work with topographic surveys, and I think that's something as, as you get deeper into that project, that's going to take a lot of study with how do you, how do you deal with, with where the sidewalk is, what it would take to get something improved, and what the, what the topography that would be, because you've got residential lots buddy right up to that sidewalk, and there could be challenges with that, so. But it is definitely an issue, and I think it's something that needs to be continued to be looked at. I don't know if there's an easy solution to fix it without, without further study from a real, from a real engineering perspective.
Yeah, we'd be taking part of people's yards away again, what happened, basically. Oh, yeah. It becomes a real problem for us to do because of dealing with so many different of the residences that end up with, that'll end up with a big retaining wall and very little front yard.
Yep. But it was something that we heard concern about in the community, so.
It does look like a big challenge to, to work.
Yeah.
Other questions, Council? If not, we appreciate you guys coming down. I know you're here from Kansas City, so we'll thank you for coming down and presenting and everything you've done for us, and look forward to working with you in the future.
And we'll continue to work with Rose in getting the GIS database set up, so we'll still be a part of it.
Thank you very much. Thank you. We're going to move on then to item B, which is the 2018 budget amendment.
We're looking at two funds, and we've got the pool fund and the recreation fund. Both of them had plenty of revenues and carryover to allow for the increased expenditures, and the only reason that we're mending, proposing to amend the budget is because they went over the budgeted expenditure amounts. So we need to look at, look what we can do to get that fixed, which is just in amending the budgets. We've got in there a public hearing notice, and you can also see the dollar amounts on each of those funds. So we'd just like you guys to approve having the public hearing, publishing the public hearing, we'll have that public hearing at the next council meeting.
Good part.
Make a motion, we have a public budget hearing for amending the 2018 budget for municipal pool and recreation on December 27.
Second.
Most second to approve the budget amendment that will be needed for the next meeting. Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Burden?
Yes.
Hewer?
Yes.
Finner?
Yes.
Parton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Item C, consideration of the mobile video recorder.
Governor, Mayor, Council, before you this evening, you have a proposal. We're requesting to replace the mobile video recorders in our police cars. The original ones that we have in there now, we started using in 2008, so about 10 years ago, we installed those units into the cars. It's a DVD-based system, basically it records everything to a DVD in the car. After that's recorded, the DVDs are brought into the station and placed into evidence. As you can see in the memo there, to date, we have nearly 11,000 DVD video discs stored. So that's, that's quite an amount of video. There's no real good way to index it, we, we have done that the best that we can, but going from this point forward, we're looking for a better solution to make sure that we can take care of that and index it easier, making any kind of record requests or discoveries and court hearings an easier thing to deal with. Last year, the police department replaced our body cameras that we were using with the watch guard body camera system. At that time, we also purchased their video server, which simplified the storage and also our retention of body cam video with the intent to integrate our MVR cameras within the next year. That year has gone by, so here we are tonight. We'd like to upgrade the MVR systems in the cars to synchronize all of our video footage to maximize efficiency and simplify our process of finding and reviewing videos. Now to do that, we're asking for approval to purchase 11 watch guard 4E standard DVR camera systems. These will replace the 10 units that are currently in place, and it will also add one additional unit for animal control vehicle, which we don't have one in right now. The reason we're asking for the watch guard system and didn't go out for bid to other systems is the watch guard system is proprietary system. Everything would sync together, it'll all go on the same server. This way, when we pull up an incident, we not only see the camera that's on the officer's body, but we also see the camera from the car's viewpoint. So on the same screen, you have a split screen, and you have two different views of the same incident, just gives us a little better view of what's going on there. We do have the bid from watch guard for the system and any of the additional infrastructure to be installed. The total bid from them is $61,575 for the 11 camera systems licensing and the network infrastructure. This purchase would come from the law enforcement trust fund, and at this time, we'll take any questions you have.
Questions for the chief, Council? None? You'd like to give any questions? Mr. Burton?
I would like to motion that we allow the chief to buy the 11 MVR cameras for, from watch guard for the amount of $61,057.
Second.
Most second to approve the purchase of the cameras as presented. Discussion? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Burden?
Yes.
Hewer?
Yes.
Finner?
Yes.
Parton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you. Move on then to item D, which is consideration of farm lease agreement for the first parcel. This one is the...
This one's south of Country Lakes?
This one, excuse me?
South of Country Lakes?
South of Country Lakes, yeah. These are actually the same leases, being leased by the same people, the one change in the lease is so that if there's any total acreage besides sludge, that we limit our liability to any crop damage that may cost out there. Ms. Burton?
I make a motion, we approve the farm lease for the northwest corner of Section 12, Township 29, South Range 1 West, Sedgwick County, containing 73 acres for a total of $1,728.
Second.
Most second to approve the farm lease for parcel one. Discussion? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Burden?
Yes.
Hewer?
Yes.
Finner?
Yes.
Parton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
And then item F is the farm lease agreement for parcel three, which is the land behind Public Works at this point, where the new dog park and improvements are going over there with soccer fields. This is the remaining land that will not be used for those. Discuss.
Make a motion, we approve the farm lease agreement for parcel three.
Second.
Most second to approve the farm lease parcel three. Discussion? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Burden?
Yes.
Hewer?
Yes.
Finner?
Yes.
Parton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Item G is consideration memorandum of understanding for Angel of Hope Memorial. We've got with us tonight Stacy and Robert Conley, and also Damon Coe, Cars for the Cause. They approached the city wanting to put in the Angel of Hope Memorial here in the city out in Dorner Park. There are no other Angel of Hope memorials in the state of Kansas at this point. It's something that truly would really add to the city and the state and Dorner Park itself as to where they're wanting to place it. Zach is going to go through a video so you understand what the Angel of Hope is.
Do we have the video? I didn't. I've got slides in the packet.
No video, no slides, no nothing.
We've got slides.
Just going to have to talk?
We've got slides. Slides in the packet.
He's going to do slides, he's not going to do video.
Apologies.
Okay, up to you, Zach.
Oh, well, no, if you want Stacy can come up and she can tell you the story and then make you cry, so I'm going to try to prevent that. No, Angel of Hope, they approached us wanting a place of solitude where they could go and find memorance, and as I kind of went down the rabbit hole, so to speak, and researching on this, this is, it's a very neat deal. They, I believe they do a candlelight vigil at these, at December 6th of every year. I don't think they're going to have any problem raising the funds. This letter of intent is just to basically solidify so they can, they've already established Angel of Hope Kansas, but they need to have a home, and they've been at our Fall Festival, our historic Christmas, and they just really want to shout the message of, we have a home and a place to start raising funds for, but they can't do that right now. So really, this, this letter of intent would mean a lot, and let them get forward with establishing their 401(c)(3). Right now, they're running it through Cars for the Cause, they've partnered with Damian Coe, who's an established 401(c)(3), and kind of navigate the waters form here in the next year. So just, I can entertain any questions. Hopefully, the, the map and the location, you, you will... Right now, they're running it through Cars for the Cause, they've partnered with Damian Coe, who's an established 401(c)(3), and kind of navigate the water storm here in the next year. So just, I can entertain any questions, hopefully the map and the location you will...
So that everyone understands that may not be able to see the video or the slides.
It's in Dorner Park, by the pond.
This is for the memorial of families that have lost children. Is what it's for, so that everyone understands that maybe at home, watching, not understanding truly what it is, and not having the slide up in front of them. And I don't know if we can even show the angel somewhere at this point, can we? I think the angel becomes a very, can we get it on the screen at this point, Coe? I can see it from your computer.
The angel is the one constant throughout all these memorials, the landscape and facade around it are all different, but the angel is the one, the one constant, so that's the same molding.
This will be going, as you know, on the west, southwest of Dorner Park is where it will be going. They truly, with this agreement that we're looking at, it gives them time to raise their funds, and they know that they will have a place to put it for sure at this point. Zach can answer questions? I can, and I'm sure that the Carmans and Damian would answer any questions you may have at this point also. Not seeing any questions, anyone want to make a motion, Mr. Kessler?
I was gonna say, I think it's a good program. I know I talked to you at the Fall Festival, and I can relate to the Angel of Hope Memorial. And I do wanna make a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding for the Angel of Hope Memorial as presented tonight.
Second. Most second to approve the memorandum of understanding for the Angel of Hope, discussion, question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Finner?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you. You have a home. We'll move on then to item seven, the harbor report, say administrative services as well. Say, Kurt, Damian?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, just a reminder that we will be closed for Christmas on December 24th, 25th. Also, the last council meeting of the year will be on Thursday, December 27th.
Please, Chief?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, this evening, our visiting officer is Lieutenant Greg Wright. He is currently our patrol division commander, so say hi to him as you go by out there. Also, we have Coffee with the Cop this Wednesday morning from 7:30 to 9:00, we'll be over at the Learning Center on Stewart. So please stop by and see us if you'd like to come by and take part in that, thank you.
Yeah, by the way, Tony.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, German water line project is now complete, we're hoping to do the final walkthrough this week. Also, beginning this Wednesday, In situ form technology will be in town installing secured-in-place pipe liner in the sewer system. The areas of work include Anita, Slade, Clinton, Hillcrest, Hunter, Alexander, and Fager. Those crews will be accessing the rear easements of those properties for the manholes. They will contact the residents, tell them what the project is, what it'll consist of. This should take approximately two weeks, weather permitting. If anyone has any questions, you can direct them to our office. Also, we will be closed December 24th and 25th for the holiday, and of course, you can reach us for any water and wastewater emergencies with Hayesville Dispatch at 529-5912, thank you.
Tony, you got a question? Mr. Gordon?
Tony, I have a question. I've got several phone calls. The people are glad that we're putting the new water lines in. Some of the people are, have an issue with when they turn their waters on, the discoloration, which I told them that's typical, I mean, you know, but are we like flushing the system out? I mean, I'm sure you're flushing the system out before...
Yeah, we checked last week before they turned it on, they flushed all the hydrants correctly. A lot of it can be some of these older areas, their service lines are plumbing inside their house.
Right.
When you shut the water off, it kind of cleans the pipes inside, so. The best thing to do is just let your water run in the bathtub for a little bit and get it out of the system.
Okay, well, I just wanted to kind of give people a heads up on what, because that's what I told them, I said, when you turn water off, you do that, when it comes back on, you have that issue, so. That's all I have.
Mr. Christian, George?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, this Friday night, we'll have a middle school game night at the activity center, it'll be 7:30 to 9:30. Will be for the middle school and the west middle school. We are taking registrations for January aquatics, we will have water aerobics, then lap and walk swimming and swim lessons, you can register for those at the activity center. And then lastly, we will be closed on December 24th and 25th, we will close at 5:00 PM on New Year's Eve, and will be closed New Year's Day. That's all I have.
I have eight appointments, we have none, item nine, off agenda citizen, be heard, anyone that would like to speak to Council at the time? Seeing no one come forward, we'll go on to item 10, executive session, we have nothing. Item 11, bills be paid, A, bills be paid for the first half of December, Ms. Ewer?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we pay the first half, or, yes, the first half of December bills.
Second. Most second, pay the first half of December bills, discussion, question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Finner?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Item 12, consent agenda, we have nothing, item 13, council items, A, council concerns, any concerns, Councilor? Seeing none, we'll go to item B, council action request update, we had one on the historic district that has been taken care of with the additional chats. Item 14, adjournment?
Mayor and Council, make a motion, we adjourn tonight's meeting?
Second.
Most second to adjourn, discussion, question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Finner?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.